With a roll call. I am here, Rebecca Hansen. Phil?
Here.
Zach is excused this evening. Mike Ahearn?
Here.
John?
Here.
Carl?
Here.
Mark?
Here.
Phil?
Here. Yikes.
Mike Bouchard?
Yeah.
Steve?
Here.
Susan?
Here.
Okay. We have a full board this evening, so alternates, I invite you to participate in the conversation, but you won't be voting this evening. Next, let's review the minutes from our meeting on October 21st. Any edits, comments, corrections for the minutes? Would anyone like to make a motion to approve the minutes from October 21st?
I move we approve the minutes.
Second.
Any further discussion? Saying none. All those in favor of approving those minutes say aye.
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 Any opposed? Any abstentions? Any public comments that are not related to any business that's on the agenda for this evening? Alright. None. June, have we received any communications? No. Committee reports. Hey, Bill, any updates from the Select Board?
Sure. Actually, we're -- So, we're gonna be meeting with Laurie Summer on the 10th of November regarding the ability for us to have a non-motorized path across the wetland mitigation easement. Keep on hearing more desire to have that be, so hopefully we'll be able to negotiate that.
Mike Bouchard, any updates from the Conservation Commission? Okay. Any other committee representatives? Anyone on other boards? Alright.
Would this be an appropriate point to comment about a discussion with the Conservation Committee member? So, I had had a conversation informally with a member of the Conservation Committee who had raised concern about the wetlands that were being impacted by Rhapsody and Aroma Joe's, and they had cited or indicated that those had been wetlands that were kind of offsets during the development of Walmart. But, I'm wondering if -- I don't know if we have -- I'm wondering, that decision was before my time, I don't know, I don't have the experience, but I'm wondering, do we need to pay more attention when wetlands are set aside or preserved in part of one development? Do we need to record anything in the future to make sure that future developments don't impact wetlands that were set aside?
I think that conservation easement would do that, would be that tool, and I know that the Walmart development did trigger some conservation easements uphill by the Harbor Homes.
Okay, but not down --
Development.
But not downhill.
I just, I know that instance because of the -- Because of the Harbor Homes application, or applications that we've seen. But, if there's an easement placed on it for protection, that's gonna get, you know, a, even if it's in an abutting property, it's gonna get treated like in a butter, get noticed like in a butter, so the entity that's responsible for protecting that property and making sure the easement stipulations are met would get, would ideally be representing themselves in that property in the discussion.
There's also a conservation easement out, I think it's behind Tractor Supply and on the lot between where Rhapsody's proposal is and Tractor Supply, there's another lot. And I believe, and actually I was gonna look that up, I just haven't had a chance to dig into it in the files, I don't know where it is, so.
There's some clearing in that area too right now, right?
Yeah. That, somebody mentioned that, and I haven't, I don't know exactly what's, what the deal is there. I can say the Rapsody, we still have not gotten revised plans, and I know that they have not, it's my understanding they, because they haven't revised the plans, they also haven't submitted any wetlands permit application yet, so we don't know, you know, they were trying to keep it under the 3,000 square feet, I think it is, for minimum impact. When there's an application that goes in, the Conservation Commission is notified of it, I believe, so that gives them a chance to review it also, so.
Do we know that they have time to meet, discuss it, and respond typically before we meet again? Well, if we receive an application and share information with the Conservation Committee, are their meetings scheduled such that they would be, have time to provide us feedback before we have a hearing? I'm not sure what the schedule is.
Not sure what their schedule is, so, yeah.
Well, if a wetland permit is required, then, you know, we would have our boiler play, or I don't know how to say boiler play anymore, but making the application conditional upon the wetlands permit, the wetlands permit needs to get signed off by the Conservation Commission, and that timeline is firmly set, so.
That's funny. And again, my point in bringing this up is not to revisit any past decisions, it's simply for us to remember to be more, be diligent in ensuring that we track records, and if we need to record easements, we do that.
I think that does highlight just the importance of recording easements and separating the ownership, especially in situations like that, between the property owner and the easement holder, so that the easement is protected, so.
Thank you.
Any new business? Alright. Moving on to unfinished business, back to our zoning ordinance amendments, just to bring us all onto the same page, we've been discussing for a bunch of months now some changes to the zoning ordinance to help us do our job better, to make things more clear, and really, I think we've sort of been looking at this as kind of a zoning ordinance cleanup and some administrative changes, namely around fences, non-conformity, and then we've also been looking, investigating housing and how there is a lack of housing statewide and in Plymouth, and we've been hearing some feedback that our zoning ordinance with the maximum multifamily unit of six is not big enough to make any sort of, to make for affordable housing in Plymouth. So, those are the three areas where we're looking at improving our zoning ordinance. June's done some work. Does anyone else wanna help summarize what I just said, just to make it that clear for everybody? Okay. June's done a lot of work at trying to get some side-by-side comparisons for what these changes will look like. I think it maybe makes the most sense, did you have a order that you think this is the easiest to present, or do you mind if I just jump right into fences?
Sure, and I can do a screen share to help, and we can turn the, if the audience wants to see, because we did not, I did not make copies. Can I just give a quick overview of my color-coded sheets here?
The legend for the --
I know it's more handouts, the last meeting, some board members wanted to see it presented differently, so each sheet addresses a different issue, and there's a new one about temporary uses and camping, use of kind of recreational vehicles that I wanted to also bring up. We've talked about it before, we hadn't had a chance to dig into it. In addition, I put what we've been talking about into the actual zoning ordinance, and that's what I emailed out to you, so you could see through track changes roughly, hopefully that, you know, seeing where it would go into the document. I did not make copies of that, because obviously it's, you know, multiple pages, but I can do a screen share with that as we go through it. I did not, I just wanna give a little bit of a background, that these handouts, these color-coded ones probably still need some work, there might be some typos on it. I've gotten pulled into another issue with this downtown drainage project the last couple days, so my time to put into this wasn't as much as I wanted, because of multiple meetings the last couple days on that, and I also have had computer problems and can't print anything, so while I printed things and I wanted to make a few changes, it was just too, it's just been a bit difficult last 24 hours, so we're working on all that. So, again, this is a work in progress, and we'll just go through this presentation of it, I guess, in different formats, so. You wanna start with the fences, then?
Sure, let's start with the fences. Alright, so with the fences, what we found is there's some confusion, and just the way the ordinance reads is very confusing, and whether you need, I'm not gonna explain this correctly, but four-foot versus six-foot, and front yards and side yards, and so this was just kind of restructured in a way that, in my mind, makes it a little bit more clear.
Phil? Can I get the, I didn't get the fence one. I'm sorry.
And then, we also are proposing to remove fences, the phrase fences over four feet high as an accessory structure, because that just adds another layer of complication to the ordinance itself. Discussion about the importance, or just, what do folks think about this, this section?
When I read it at home, it looked pretty sensible and like a good clarification of what was -- I think, as we talked about last time a bit, the content and the substance of it looks fairly similar, but a lot more clear to actually get through and read and understand, and it looked pretty good to me.
Thank you, John. I had, unless other folks have questions or comments, I had one question, if we need to address what happens to fences four-foot and lower in the front yard? Because we specify in the fences less than six feet are permitted within the side and rear yard setbacks, fences within the front yard setback over four feet in height shall require a special exception. We don't specifically say four feet and under, it can be implied from this, but I'm not sure if we need to explicitly say so.
Yep, we can, so under B, we need to clarify that, right?
Okay. Yep.
The proposed new text, that darker blue in the bottom right.
Mm-hmm. Mike?
I just have a question, if there were copies that, anybody in the audience, were there extra copies, or do they have any? I don't know.
I did not make, I did not know how many people, but we have a few extra copies, so we can hand them around, I can also, this is gonna be hard to read, and this, because this is what we have for presentation, so, but yes, I can, I think we have three extra copies.
Steve?
I think the point that was just made about fences in the front yard, does it make sense to clarify in A, that fences under four feet are allowed in the front setback?
Fences four-foot and under in the -- Yeah, that, I think it does make sense to put it there.
Yeah, it does.
Yeah, fences, so the comment that I made, move that to the, to number A, to letter A instead of B? Okay. So, what do folks think, are we good to move this on to being on, you know, with a little bit more language tweaking, and have this be ready to go for our hearings in January?
I would support that. I think we've, you know, clarified some of the issues that we've come across adequately, and, you know, we might have minor tweaks to this as we move forward, but are you looking for a motion?
Actually, I'm, one other question I had, but I didn't notice the first time going through this, last week, we had a conversation, and I think it was in the language somewhere, about the exception for agricultural fences for livestock and such. I don't, am I missing it, or?
It's D in the very bottom right corner, in the dark blue box.
Oh, there it is, I never, never mind, okay.
Mike?
I would, I don't know if it was the chair's intention, as we go through each section before we kinda go on to the next, if you wanna get, if there's a chance for feedback for each section as we go through it from the public.
I'm trying to get feedback from the board first, and --
Yes.
And --
Just before we move on?
I am possibly open to that, I just, I'd like to, what is, what is the board thinking? Do we wanna open up for public discussion, or do we wanna make a decision as a board to move this forward, to then get put it under public scrutiny, with it being a little formalized?
I think I would prefer to keep this a board discussion for now, until we have public hearings.
And I would just add to that, it's difficult to have a public discussion unless we actually read all this out to the public right now, because it's, with free copies floating around, it's hard to actually have that discussion in any reasonable manner.
We should certainly make this available to the public, but I don't feel that this is the correct time to have public discussion on these.
I'm certainly open to, maybe at the end of all the zoning discussion, to open this up to the public at that point, just to get some, some feedback, as we normally do, but I, let's, yeah, I feel like this is pretty straightforward, we're not, this is, these aren't substantive changes at all, these are.
Clarifications.
What do, what do folks think on this end of things?
Yeah, I see no point in confusing the issue by taking it out of the planning board at the moment.
Mike?
I, just for simplicity's sake, it would be nice after we talk about it, rather than at the end, if people came to voice their opinion, and going back and forth to each, maybe there won't be, and it may be that no one has anything to say, but it'd be kinda make it more straightforward to get the comments on that particular topic before we move on, especially if we're gonna allow it at the end.
Yeah, let's, let's see how we go here, I think, I would prefer to keep the public comments together, then, Bill or Mark, do you have any opinion about this?
No. I'd be, I'd be fully in support of putting a public comment at the end, though.
Let's just, let's just stick with that for now, and we'll see how we do. Alright, so, do we need a motion to say we're gonna move this forward, or can we just agree as a board that we're gonna move this forward with, to the formalized zoning amendment?
I was thinking if we're, we could do it as a batch, if we're happy with all of them, and do it at the end, or we could do them one at a time, but I do think we should vote.
Do we need, do you think we need a vote, June, or is this?
I think it would be nice to have some decision one way or another, so we can kinda put this one, you know, we don't have to have it again, we kind of say it's ready to go, we've got a few edits to make, once I have that, we can get it on the town's website, so that everybody can have a chance to really review it, and then we'll have public comments at future meetings perhaps, but also we'll have public hearings, I believe it's January 6, and somewhere I've got those dates in front of me, but, yeah, we, we have to do this work to get the text right, in order, you know, and then get it out there, so it will start to be, the hearing will be noticed in some point in early to mid-December.
The danger of doing it as a batch is also that, this is pretty straightforward, the housing might cause more contention, and it might be good not to have this caught up in that.
Right.
I would say if we're gonna have a vote to move this forward, to then bring it to a hearing, that people showed up today that might have some thoughts that could improve it, or some suggestions, or something that we hadn't thought of as a board, that before we vote, especially knowing we're gonna vote to put it forward, that we should get the input, we're not afraid of the public, we should embrace that, and that's what our job here is, we represent the people, we don't just represent ourselves, and I would be very surprised, I'd be very worried that this board would just not listen to the public first.
I don't think their point is to not listen to the public, they wanna speak.
Hang on, hang on a sec, hang on a sec. Thank you, Carl, thank you, Mike. Alright, we will open it up for public comment, I don't know if the public has gotten a chance to see this, I will add, as my own asterisk to this, that the public hearings that we have scheduled in January are the time for us to put this to the public with plenty of, with legally required notice, but, but if we're good, let's open this up to the public. Does anyone have any comments about the changes that we are proposing for the fencing section of the ordinance?
Yes, my concern is, oh. My concern is, and confusion would be about a fence that is just required for safety, if you're enclosing dogs, a four-foot fence is not sufficient, so we would be looking at a five at least, and that may be in a residential area, as opposed to just agricultural use, and I think the purpose of the four-foot limit on constructing without a review, getting a building permit, it deals with part of the International Building Codes and the restriction of whether or not it's a solid mass, like a stone wall, concrete, or steel, versus a chain link or other see-through fence system that is used as a buffer barrier. That part with the new proposed area is not clear enough to whether a regular person could determine how the exempt part would have fit their use of.
Thank you.
And, as a clarification, we would also need to come up with criteria for the special exception at some point if we're going to go forward with that route.
It would probably be the general criteria.
Okay.
That, you know, we can, which we'll talk about in a bit here too, so.
Any other comments about?
Well, actually, I have a question.
Yeah.
Would that be a reasonable safety purpose, to keep a dog from escaping, or no? Since that is part of the language here.
Mm-hmm.
Potentially. Yeah, I would think so. It becomes a code enforcement issue at that point, I mean, if, if, I think there's, I think the language here is flexible enough that it allows some flexibility, but, you know, if somebody makes the case that they need a six-foot fence for safety, I think they have that potential.
So, the, I would just add that the, one of the reasons why most zoning ordinances will have a lower requirement, the four-feet for the front, is to be able to both let public safety officials see into a property, as well as turning, pulling in and out of a driveway, that kind of sight distance, that's a sort of a, especially on a corner lot, that kind of thing, so that's sort of the safety aspect to it, but it's not just about your dog getting out, it's about, it's about, you know, if something's happening on the property, police and fire need to be able to see in too, to what's going on.
And, as a clarification, corner lots have two front yards, so there would, if there was a corner lot, they would be able to have a four-foot fence on either the, a street-facing part, okay.
Go ahead.
Yeah, Bruce Ahearn. Just a couple things on that, first of all, as far as she's saying people seeing in, there's nothing prevent someone from putting plants out there that end up growing, blocking any view, so I don't think you should use that as an excuse for limiting the fence in the front yard. The other thing is, I have a problem with the one foot off the property line, what's the reason for that? Because it used to be a state statute that said all fences needed to be on the property line, and if you're taking, requiring people to be one foot off the property, property line, that's actually a taking of a foot of your property, if you've got a big lot, you're taking a significant portion of a person's property, so I don't see as there is a need, people need to know where their property line is, and the fences should be on the property line.
The proposed language does say, except for a common fence marking a property line, so it does specify that. June?
And the existing text says, except for a common fence, all fences shall be located one feet from the property line, so we're not changing that.
I understand that, but it shouldn't have been put in to begin with, and I'm wondering why it, why it's in there, and whether it should be taken out, because it's a taking of property without compensation, because once you put up a fence, you have no longer use of that one foot of your property, so to me, prop, fences should be on the property line, that's the way the state statute used to be, I don't know if it still is, I don't think it's changed, I haven't had a chance to look it up, but it used to be that all fences required to be on the property line, because I have lost property, because fences were put up, and then a surveyor comes in and uses that fence to dictate where the property line is, and if you've required me to put it one foot off my property line, 20, 30 years from now, a surveyor's gonna come in, and I've now lost one foot of my property for however long my fence is, so to me, it should be taken out. Just one other comment while I'm up here, the board says they don't wanna hear from the public in these meetings on each one of --
Hang on, is this, is this about the fence, the fence?
Nope.
Why don't you save that for later then, thank you. Alright. Anyone else about the fence ordinance? Alright. Would we like to make a motion to move this forward, or do we need to do any more investigation based on the most recent comments? Mike, go ahead.
I, I worry about having a foot off the property line or more as well, maybe not as, as much, but I work for a surveyor and engineer, and we would go on common, common lines to locate, and when you fenced yourself, that you have a foot on your property, but you have a fence all along, and it could be quite a length, and a dog from another property sees you, thinks that you're on their property, you're in danger, and you can't escape back to your home, because you've gotta go around a full length of fence, and that's the only way to get to your side of the property is on the other side of your fence, I would think we'd wanna look at this a little more, but that's just me, it's.
So, we have decided to make administrative changes to our zoning ordinance, the feedback that we have gotten is that we weren't necessarily ready to change much substance, so we're not changing what's already in the ordinance, so my suggestion would be, we just move forward with this, we're making the ordinance more clear, and let's add a examination of that one foot for another iteration, so it's already in there, in the zoning ordinance, so let's just move forward with making this more clear, and this is essentially dealing with setbacks and height, fence height, without really changing much substance, but removing some of the disparities, discrepancies from section to section.
There are RSAs that deal with dividing fences, I mean, it's not impossible to put it on a property line.
And this has it right here, anyway.
Hang on, this, I don't wanna, this is why I was worried about opening this up to a public hearing.
I agree.
I don't wanna, and this is, I really don't wanna spend any more time on this, I, it sounds to me like the board is ready to move this on to finalizing it and preparing it for a public hearing, and maybe we need a motion to move that on, so we can put this, put this to bed for now, and we, there will be time in January for public hearing, public comment, and a second comment period where we, in between, we can make revisions that we think are necessary after hearing some public comment, so.
I would make the motion that we move the proposed changes to the section dealing with fences forward with the edits that were discussed.
Second.
Any further discussion? Alright, all those in favor of moving this forward, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nay.
Any abstentions? Alright. We good to go with non-conformity next? Sure, that's the longer one. Which is?
That's the one, the colorful one that's stapled together.
Yep. Okay. So, this one is also another, really trying to bring the ordinance to a -- So this one is also another, really trying to bring the ordinance to a state where it's understandable and putting everything in the right section. And the first thing is, a couple of years ago, we added to the zoning ordinance allowing to, if you've got a non-conforming, a pre-existing, oh my gosh, pre-existing structure that's encroaching in a setback, you can add to that structure within the same amount of encroachment into the setback. For whatever reason, it got put into the wrong section. So we want to move it out of the section that it's in and move it to the rest of the non-conforming section.
So this is just an organizational change, removing it from residential setbacks into section, section three or four to section four?
Putting it with the rest of its non-conforming parts. That's part one, yeah. All right, so that's the first page. And then, June, if I'm watching explaining this, please jump in or if anyone else wants to jump in in the explanation of this. Basically, taking the, moving our non-conformity section into non-conforming lots, non-conforming uses, and non-conforming structures because each of those are handled slightly different. So in this, this section, there's enough change to it. It's hard to look at it side by side because it is kind of a reconfiguration of it. But it doesn't change the substance of what the ordinance currently says. Just makes it so it's readable and understandable. Really helps to try to clarify things from where we administer the ordinance. You know, Scott Whedon is code enforcement officer, building inspector, and myself, and primarily, we are, have stumbled over trying to figure out, you know, what happens with some types of non-conformity from time to time. And I think there's some sort of conflicting parts to what we currently have. And we also note, address non-conforming lots. When we, as I've mentioned, we recently had a lot line adjustment where we didn't, with two, three lots, two of which didn't have enough frontage. It still didn't gain frontage enough to be conforming, but it reduced the amount of non-conformity. So it was a little bit of a question of how to handle that. So this would help, the new section 405.1 would address that. 405.2 is, you know, this is pretty standard kind of stuff in zoning and it just reorganizes it and tries to understand what we have and put it in, in kind of into sections about lots and uses and structures and deal with that, pulling that alteration setback issue from the 304 into this part. Because that's really where it belongs, all right? There's some other things I can say about this legally that are kind of complex regarding the, on the top of the second page, the yellow boxes and item two, current text for 401.2. I'm trying to really just simplify that. That basically says you can build on a non-conforming lot. What we have there now is basically questionable if it's even legal for a couple of reasons. Because there's this long history of not, of lot mergers, involuntary lot mergers. It's kind of a complex story. But you can't really force somebody, if they own vacant land next door, to try to use that to make conformity. That's not, not a good practice to have. And so we've had that there for some time, I guess. And really talking about how items B and C, how a structure would fit on an existing lot in record, that's what you deal with under the other, it's taking those parts and kind of rebuilding it into the new section in the darker blue box, so. That was the goal of it. And I see that we, you did add that section in that we talked about last time about rebuilding, even if a foundation is. Yes, I did make some changes. Yep. So that's the only, I think that's the biggest change we saw from last time. Questions and comments about this, this proposed change in the board?
I would say that the 405.32, destruction demolition A size, the non-conforming area of a rebuilt structure shall not exceed the dimensions, dimensional size of the original building footprint is fairly generous in that many towns exceed enlarged, or prohibit enlarging the structure at any level in footprint or elevation. So I, I think that's still pretty generous to people who happen to have, choose to build, to demolish or, you know, necessitate by fire.
I, I have a question.
Yeah.
Let's say I have a non-conforming lot. And it's a small non-conforming lot, which if I follow the regulations, I really can't build on. A building may be constructed on any lot of record. Is that an issue?
So I think, but it says on, maybe as long as you follow the guidance in.
That's what it says, like 405.1.
Yes.
Which, right above that, a building may be constructed on any lot of record.
It should probably say 405, actually. So it could also be a 405.3, you know, that kind of thing, so.
Right, so strike, strike the one from.
Okay.
Yeah, that's why these are still a draft because we make. Okay? So that darker yellow on page two should say 405. At the end of that sentence, point two, I believe.
Okay. Shouldn't we just leave it at section 405?
Just section 405 might be a better.
Generally.
Yeah. I'll take a look at that.
Maybe it's okay, I don't know. There may be, there may be issues. I mean, if we limit it to 405.2, there may be issues with 405.1 or 405.3 that aren't addressed. I think it's better to just.
Good catch, I can take a. And just to clarify for the board and the public that this will get sent to the town's attorney before we finalize the language. So it'll get picked through in a legal manner as well. Questions, comments from the board? Do you feel like we're in a position to move this forward and finalize it as a zoning ordinance change?
We're going to hear from the public first, right?
Yes. Just trying to make sure we don't have anything else from the board first. Anything from our alternates down there at the end? All right. I am opening up this, this up to the public to comment on the non-conformity changes we are proposing for the zoning ordinance. Does anyone have any comments about this particular section? Come on up to the mic.
I think it would be appropriate, most zoning ordinances say that if a non-conforming use of structure is going to be enlarged or intensified, at least a special exception ought to be obtained, unless a non-conformity exists. Understand?
That's what you're asking to be, have us include in this?
I think that should be included.
Okay. That is noted, thank you. And again, we were not trying to make any substantive changes that are going to change how basically business as usual is, is happening here. We're just trying to make this easier to administer. What do folks think? Do we want to talk about requiring a special exception for? For what was mentioned? June? Currently, the, what we say is change and expansion of non-conforming uses. You can't do it without a variance. So I took that out to just sort of, because usually you want to, in ordinances, you want it to be permissive, so you tell you people what you can do. And if it's not listed, then you can't do it. So by, what I have here for non-conforming uses was trying to simplify it a bit and just basically say anything that was a lawful use that existed prior to adoption of the ordinance or an amendment. You know, if it's, it's a non-conforming use, it can stay non, it can continue. But if it's, that use is ends up, is discontinued for one year or discontinued by converting to a conforming use, then you lose that non-conformity. So it doesn't really change what we currently have in essence. Because if you wanted to expand the non-conforming use, you'd need a variance, which is what we currently require. Okay. So we could put in something to say, if you wanted to expand it, it should be a special exception and make it more lenient than what we currently have. At this point, it's a variance because we're not saying what you can do.
Anything in the zoning ordinance can be applied for variance.
Right.
By definition. So, I mean, if, if we don't say that it needs a variance, it can still get a variance. But if you, like the, the special exception is a special circumstance where you say this can be approved by a special exception, but certainly we want to have criteria.
So the language is trimmed down, but effectively, to expand a non-conforming use or to change from one non-conforming use to another non-conforming use, you have to go to the zoning board for a variance. That's probably what it is now. If we wanted to do something different, we can talk, you know, we can, I can look into it.
I, I would invite any members of the zoning board who, when we go to comment, if, if they would like to recommend special criteria for us to issue a special exception in certain circumstances, I would, I would think that we would have, I think that would apply to almost any situation. If we have any issues of our zoning ordinance that we receive regular requests for variances on, if it facilitates the ZBA process by knowing which ones we should be recommending special except, special exceptions for, we can add those in, in the future as well. But right now, I don't really know what kind of hot button topics the ZBA gets regularly that would be easier to deal with as special exceptions versus variances.
And again, we weren't trying to actually change how things happen. You know, we were just trying to clean this up, so it's a little easier to follow. So maybe we'll add that to the list for.
I, I kind of, I mean, I'm, I'm not on the ZBA, but I, I mean, a variance is still an achievable situation.
Yeah.
Or solution.
Yeah, no, I'm, I'm fine with, with how it's written here. I think, yeah. Again, my goal was to not make, you know, try to reorganize it, make it clear, clarify it, but not necessarily make it more stringent or less stringent. That's sort of, we can if we want. Other comments from the public about this non-conformity section? All right, back to the board. Are we ready to, to move this forward?
I will move that we approve the recommended changes to section 405, eliminating section 401.2. As recommended and drafted.
Yeah.
Okay, let's, we, let's hold off on that to some, some public comment non-related to the non-conformity section for, for later on. Phil, you were saying?
I was done.
Okay, so we have a motion to approve the non-conformity change. As proposed with, I think there was one minor edit.
Yeah.
Okay, any further discussion?
So I want to be clear on what we're voting on. Right now, if someone wanted to enlarge, let's say they've got a bump out on their house and in the side yard, it's, it's non-conforming house and they want to finish off the bump out to make it a complete square, which would be, would they, right now, the way the regulations are for the town, they would need a variance to do that? Is that what I'm hearing?
No.
They could just do it?
Yes.
But with the changes where we would be proposing, would they then need a variance? They would still be able to do it without needing anything.
Variance discussion comes into play when we're talking about a change, non-conforming use.
For the use, not, so right now, not, I'll pose the question same way. If there is a use that's non-conforming and they, someone wanted to change it to another non-conforming use, they could do it now the way I read it. They could, they would be variance. And with the proposed changes, if they have a non-conforming use, they want to change to a different non-conforming use.
They need a variance.
It would still need a variance.
Changing of the structure, I think it's, it's the same diagram of like what's allowed, which has been moved to a different page of the, section of the document.
And, yeah, we made a decision as a board to just deal with administrative changes to clean up the existing challenges that we have in our zoning ordinance. Okay, so we have a motion and a second on the table. Any further discussion? Okay, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? All right. Since we're on the colored versions, can we stick with those and, because it's one page, introduce the new topic about the campers? Is that okay? You want to do that one, get into the housing one? Yeah. Does that sound okay? Great. Do you want me to? Yeah, can you do the intro on this one? Sure. So there's a couple of issues. So this is an emerging issue that not just Plymouth, but I know of a, it's funny, I by chance stumbled across another town that was doing something similar. And if you drive around New Hampshire, there's many places where you're starting to see people using what we define as sort of recreational vehicles. And we have many different definitions in our ordinance around that. But there's also a state statute that pretty clearly defines what those are. So currently in our ordinance, we define temporary uses and structures really stating that you could live in some kind of temporary trailer of some type or recreational vehicle for a period while you may be building your home or, you know, construction trailers on site during a commercial construction project, that kind of thing. That's what we currently have in section 403 around temporary uses and structures. So there's no changes to that paragraph. And what Scott Whedon and I have gone through and had fairly lengthy, looking at some different options of how to address this, this issue because it's, it is one here in town now, as people may be aware, as you drive around town. And a couple, couple of different places where we've had some public health concerns and just public safety too, of people really taking up residence in some kind of more, was more designed for a recreational vehicle, okay? So what we came up with, and it may still need some tweaking, is that new paragraph basically saying, we want to make sure that people can still potentially, how can I describe this? Either buy a lot of land, a piece of land, and maybe on weekends, come and stay in a camper for a period of time, you know, kind of temporarily come and go. We recognize people may want to have guests, you know, in the summertime, staying in the tent out back, or they may want to use it themselves, that kind of thing. So we're trying to set up a timeline. We kind of debated about it. But we wanted to basically find a way to make it clear that these types of vehicles aren't dwelling units. And they are temporary, and yes, you can use them in a temporary way as long as you have water, as long as you have septic or sewer, some kind of plan for taking care of that and that they're safe. That they're not becoming storage units. And, you know, basically trying to find a way to address that. So we are proposing this. Scott seemed to feel, you know, and concurred that it was, after several revisions to it, fairly reasonable. So this is what we've got here, basically, that you're not to use those kinds of things as a permanent dwelling. So if you're kind of coming and going on weekends, that's different. If you are living in the house and you have it in your, you know, if you're renting a house or own a house and you want to have a camper in the yard on and off, that's not what we're trying to prevent. What we're trying to prevent is, you know, you renting out that camper, and having a tenant there, or a family member living there for any length of time, it's not supposed to become a dwelling unit, all right? This is an issue in town, I can tell you of at least three different properties where we've had calls, lots of calls and concerns from the public, and, you know, variety of ways of looking into these places, and very limited ability to do much with it currently.
Can I ask a clarifying question? So, in the first paragraph, where we define what uses there are, it says, "These uses shall be limited to manufactured home, trailers, portable structures used for residential office, storage, and locker purposes." So that does include shipping containers that might be simply storage, or some shipping containers are converted for office space, sometimes there are trailers that are used for offices, but my question is, if we have a business with a site plan, and they include, let's say they have permanently mounted, they want to use storage containers, I mean, if we approve a site plan that shows them, that would exempt, would that not exempt that business from annual permits for something like a storage container?
I think maybe that's a good point, we should need to probably take a look, bigger look at the current text in relation, I was, we got kind of caught up in adding text, and trying not to change what's there.
I'm trying to do business.
It might be a little bit of a conflict for that, so I hear what you're saying, I mean, really what we currently allow is these types of some kind of a temporary thing, either as a construction station, storage of materials, you know, a camper while you're building your house, we had somebody called recently and asked me, can they do that? So that, but that should really be tied to a building permit, and we should probably make it more clear that you have to have gotten a building permit to have that temporary kind of thing there. This is something different, if you want to use what we're defining as a recreational vehicle, that you can't use that as a dwelling unit on any permanent basis. There's sort of two parts to it, and we probably, in looking at this, it probably, again, this is the first run at this, and that's why having discussion's good, probably need to create a section one and a section two, and kind of clarify a little bit more, one's more for during construction, and one is about these kind of recreational vehicles.
I would think that if the building inspector was issuing a permit for, that would allow someone to reside in an RV or trailer on the property during construction, it would cease to be valid after they closed out the building permit. So if they get, if they complete their construction and get a CO, the building permits no longer open, which I think you could just simply tie construction permits for those vehicles to the length of the building permit, but...
Well, it's basically, you got a temporary permit for that temporary structure, and it's good for one year. So it'd be a condition on the permit.
I'm wondering if we can make it easier for homes and construction, so that if, you know, if somebody's building a home that takes three years, they don't have to reapply for their RV permit as long as their building permit is open? I mean, granted, you don't want it to stay forever, but I think the reality of somebody keeping a building permit open and not getting a CO is a challenge, because insurance is difficult, financing is difficult, if somebody's, unless somebody's building a house with cash out of pocket, that's really not going to happen. I doubt anybody's going to want to leave a building permit open that long.
Yeah, then it also brings up, you know, actually getting storage unit on site too, and how is that handled, maybe slightly different than a structure that's being resided in.
Yeah, I would say a storage unit might be different than, you know, temporary living quarters during construction, although somebody may want storage on site during construction for the same reason.
So Scott and I can look at that first part, you know, the kind of existing text, and maybe offer some changes around those lines, but, and so maybe, again, clarifying it by having sort of a part one and part two, and numbering it like we have with that, you know, but...
I do think we need to address this in zoning.
And just to clarify, so we are then banning the ability to, which might be a good thing, to, of those services, they're kind of like Airbnb but for tenting, where you can rent out a spot on your lawn for people to tent, short term, and so that implicitly here is banned, yes?
So I'll interrupt the twenty days.
It says for pay.
Nonpaying.
Nonpaying.
Oh, okay, yeah, 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 I guess. I would think we'd want to deal with that as a site plan anyway, I mean, it's a business.
Yeah, so how is that, just thinking about campgrounds as a, something that is going to go through the site plan review process, versus something that's actually on...
I mean, a campground, I mean, it's kind of in the same category as Airbnb, you're using a kind of personal property for a quasi-business sort of thing.
Right.
And that is a kind of open issue that a lot of towns are dealing with, but there's also a growing sector of people doing the same thing for tents.
Yep.
And here, it's banned, which might be the right choice, but that's kind of, I want to clarify that.
So we haven't really talked about short-term rentals, and that's another topic that we kind of have decided to not touch for right now, but I, my interpretation of the zoning ordinance is they're not permitted. We know we have them, we don't have the ability to enforce it, really, because we don't have the capacity. I know people are going to, I'll be getting phone calls tomorrow by stating that finally, but, so whether it's in a tent or in a house, it's, yeah. You know, many towns are dealing with this, there's a big, you know, we kind of want to wait and see what, kind of the general guidance is wait and see what happens with Conway, and there's some court cases, and to see how that sort of shakes out, and how the state might address it, too.
From a legal standpoint, though, if I, if, let's say my neighbor was, you know, renting out their basement with Airbnb, and I didn't like the additional traffic, I could complain to the town and request enforcement, could I not?
You could, you know, again, our capacity to really, and our ability to really catch it is difficult.
Right.
Because just having an ad doesn't mean it's actually being rented.
Having someone in enforcement who actively goes out and finds it is one thing, but if we had somebody who's complaining about it because of additional traffic, I think that would be certainly grounds for enforcement.
My understanding that we would have to actually go and find somebody that admits that, yes, they are paying money to be there, and then just the ad on a website doesn't, is not enough evidence, and you have to do this fairly regularly, so, could be a lot of Saturday nights.
I don't think that's the topic we're talking about now, but it is interesting. I think we can move forward with this without affecting, you know, we may want to deal with short-term rentals later.
Yeah, I think that, it sounds like we need a little bit more work and clarification on this, especially if we're starting, if we wanted to talk about, if we're talking just, you know, a dwelling unit, or where people are sleeping, and that's one thing, but adding the storage unit, I think makes it complicated, so...
Tent city in your backyard.
Yeah. Mike?
So I would, kind of piggybacking what John said, there are people that have something that's not a registered trailer, that's on their property, that they rent out however many days per year, to different people. That is not what we're talking about here, is that we're only going after registered vehicles that can be registered, or in tents.
Doesn't actually specify.
Manufactured homes, trailers, portable structures, so...
Portables.
Could be a trailer, could be a tiny home.
But not an excess structure on a property that's rented.
I mean, technically, that, our zoning ordinance does not allow for that already. Great?
I thought we allowed accessory dwelling units.
Oh, accessory dwelling unit, if it's an accessory dwelling, but a temporary short-term rental, is not. Steve?
I think the clarification, Mike, is that this is, if you have one of those trailers on your property, and you let me come stay, and I'm paying, just a friend coming to stay, that's what this is regulating. This isn't getting into the business of whether people are using a hip camp or doing any other stuff. This is just for the residential use of the property, or for them to allow a friend or family member to use it not paying.
So this is only going after nonpaying.
Right.
If someone were paying...
That would bring up other issues, which this is...
That's currently not allowed already.
Correct.
Right, just like, what do you call it, hip?
Yeah, like a hip camp or Airbnb type of thing.
Or an Airbnb, which is already...
It's a separate issue for this, yeah.
Our zoning ordinance does not allow it right now, but we're not dealing with that.
If all of this changes not to regulation on those where there is none currently...
And this is trying to tackle a public health issue, an emerging public health issue, essentially, that we're dealing with, so. June?
I think one of the main, I mean, everything else that we kind of added in here, so the middle of that second paragraph says, you know, "No recreational vehicle or tent, as defined by RSA 216, blah, 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 may be used as a permanent dwelling at any time." So it doesn't matter whether you're paying or not, you know, you can't just go live in a camper. We had somebody camping out behind Fairfield Inn on Riverside Landings property a few weeks ago, I don't know how they got the trailer in there.
Winter becomes a challenge for those.
Yeah. So, they didn't even have permission to be there, I guess, which is sort of, you know. So that's the kind of thing, and we, I mean, again, this ties to the housing issues in the state of New Hampshire, this is not just Plymouth's issue, this is very much popping up in other communities, so, it's a public, you know, one of the main purpose of zoning is protecting health, safety, and welfare, so this is definitely within that realm, so...
So do we want to get another crack at this next time around, with a little bit of amendment, or a little bit of change to it? I think this is, since this is the first time we've looked at it, and we'll do the same thing next time around, go through it again, give us some time to think through it a little bit, compare it to what we already see in our zoning ordinance. All right, okay, sounds good. And then next is the housing, right?
Do you want to let the public speak on that?
Since we're not moving this one forward, I think, why not? Someone have something to say about the temporary uses and structures ordinance? Step up to the microphone, please.
Thank you, just a question with the temporary uses thing. I'm just thinking of a neighbor who has a camper, and septic system, I'm assuming stated approved, but septic system well, and he's come down from Indiana for like seven months out of the year. Under, if like it got proposed and accepted as it reads now, would that mean that, since he was here for more than four months, that that would now become an issue? Yes, right, just if I'm interpreting right, yeah. Would something like that be grandfathered in, and it be like moving forward, you think, or?
Again, if they're not there year-round, then that kind of use would be lost, you know, so one thing that we did discuss quite a bit was that number of days, and we debated different, six months, something like that.
Yep.
You know, enforcement is discretionary, so, I think that our intent with this is to not, we can think about having a longer period of time, you know, we looked at it over just six months, I was suggesting spreading that time out over the year, because some people like to camp out in the winter for coming up, you know, other, so it's a little hard to define it entirely.
Yep.
But the real intent is to still find a way to allow people do what you're saying, but not have it become their home.
Okay.
So we can tweak that as numbers and think through that a little bit, and I'll talk to Scott about it some more.
All right, just thanks for the clarification, that's all, thanks.
With regard to the ability to continue to do that, it depends if what they're doing currently is technically allowed or in violation of existing zoning. If it's, if it's already in violation of zoning, it wouldn't be allowed even if they're doing it now. But if it's, if it is allowed currently, and the rule around it changes, that would be an existing use, that would be allowed to be continued.
Existing use in an existing nonconforming structure, essentially, which was so easy to find in our new nonconforming proposed language. Steve, did you have something to add? Okay, I thought I saw a handout. Any other comments about the temporary uses and structures?
You might, you might consider a minimum, which springs the statute, like, for longer than two weeks, or something like that. So when people come up on the Fourth of July and put a tent in the backyard, the building inspector doesn't go crazy. The neighbors who hate this person, you know, are calling the building inspector, why aren't you down here, listening to this?
All right, thank you. All right, are we good to move on to housing? Sure. Is that what's next, or is it the...
Nope, that's next, I'm just, I know people, we have a couple people, I think, on Zoom.
Oh, okay.
So, I'm trying to at least share. So, let me just get this. So what I had, and there's, I think, maybe one or two copies there, I did not have the time in really kind of looking at this, to put this in my color-coded boxes, so, because also, we were still debating this quite a bit, and I wanted to make sure, before I take that kind of extra time to go into sort of thinking about how to present this better, I just want to make sure we had the content right, then I can move towards that step. So there's two parts to this, one was looking at, in, which I did not make a copy for in the handout, but in section 304 of the ordinance, where we currently, it's the table of permitted uses, we currently state that you can't have more than six dwelling units for building, okay? And we had discussed last meeting, raising that to 12, based on some good input regarding Tenny Mountain and other places, so that, and we kind of heard that, you know, eight to 12 units is a better kind of number for investors and developers and builders to work with, and that would help address some of the cost of development. We talked a lot about sort of defining how to do this, either by conditional use permit or special exception, and kind of thinking about protecting that character aspect. So after further review, what I provided for you there is the list of criteria for any special exception is on one page, and on the second page with the blue text, is additional criteria that would address buildings now from three to 12 units, all right? And the other changes that we are, we had, in that section, we had already had some criteria for multiple dwelling units in just the agricultural zone, so it's keeping that, it's just kind of adding additional parts, so there's no change to that, it's just keeping that at the end, all right? So I based some of these aspects of trying to define site suitability, character of the site development, character of the buildings and structures, preservation of natural, cultural, historic, and scenic resources, external impacts, fiscal impacts. But part of that site suitability was really stating that the site is suitable for the proposed use, including adequate vehicular and pedestrian access, and the availability of public services, including basically sewage, stormwater, water, electricity act, I threw in broadband, I don't know, we haven't really talked about that one, that kind of thing. Basically saying that you can't have onsite sewage disposal not permitted for buildings greater than six, so it kind of requires a connection to public sewer. That was one thing we had talked about. Again, this is a proposal, I tried to take some of the comments that we heard, and find a way to kind of define that better, so, there it is.
So, I'm one of the individuals who asked for more information or language about character, and, I mean, reading through this, I really appreciated, especially the character of the site development part, I think that like really kind of, for me at least, kind of nails it. I was wondering about the character of the buildings and structures, and wondering, I mean, I suppose it's very open to interpretation, but like, if that becomes too restrictive in some ways? Or not?
Compatibility is a fairly subjective lens.
It is, and it's very open to interpretation, color, and, or could be, I'm just, it's the kind of minutia of design, that, I don't, I don't know. In the site character, I thought that was like really kind of exactly what I was thinking about.
I put character of buildings and structures at section three in there, basically because we had some comment, you know, we still would have a 35-foot height limit, so we're basically trying to make it sound like, you know, it has to fit kind of what the surrounding buildings are.
But talking about mass and scale, and these sorts of things, I mean, by definition, I think these are going to be larger.
They would be bigger, probably, yeah, but doesn't, you know, how that bigness is...
How it's perceived by design, yeah.
Yeah. You know, do you want to have peaked roofs, or flat roofs, you know?
Right, yeah.
And that's some, somebody was just talking about the recent... And that's some, somebody was just talking about the recent buildings down on Railroad Square, the two apartment buildings that they, they just can't stand the flat roof, they should have a peaked roof to them.
These sound like personal choices in art and architecture. And that might be a reason to call in some of the people from PSU who are in those departments to get some sort of idea of how to set up something that's the same for everybody. Well.
Steve?
Yeah, just to this point that John pointed out, number three, having written design guidelines for communities, I don't know that that's where Plymouth wants to go, is having a design guideline document that really starts to dictate. This is general enough for an applicant to know what we're asking for, and then let them come forward and make suggestions about how it would work on their site. And if there are topography issues that you wouldn't even notice it's a flat roof because of the architectural features, they can show you that. I like it because it gives enough direction, but it doesn't tie their hands so much.
You know, so we're not putting something that looks like a parking garage, you know, right in the middle of a residential neighborhood, so you don't have the concrete flat roof building where it just wouldn't, it would stick out in a very odd way.
You're also not going to get exactly the same building, although, you know, wherever they may be.
I like the tone of three, you know, the design shall not be incompatible with the established character of the neighborhood. You know, I think that's, obviously there's room for interpretation there, but I think it gives applicants sufficient or leeway to design something that's both interesting and functional, but doesn't stand out.
But who, so, but who's the judge of that?
So.
The ZBA.
Zoning Board.
But we don't have to design something like neo-Victorian in a Victorian neighborhood.
Yeah, right.
Not unless every house in that neighborhood is Victorian.
But we, still, would you need to though today?
I don't know. You could. I doubt it.
I think you could certainly make something that fits within the character of that neighborhood without it having a, you know.
Exactly that way, yeah.
In three, where we talk about the cladding and colors proposed to be used, oh, sorry, the material and color proposed to be used, would, would it make sense to specify, and the cladding material and color proposed to be used? I think generally what we're looking for is exterior, like siding and roofing, right? But I, it seems like.
Exterior materials?
Yeah.
Yeah. You want, when the lights are on, the curtains are open at night, you want to make sure everything coordinates just right.
That's what I'm trying to get away from, yeah. Thank you.
Can I put in the orange building on Russell Street?
I've seen some really cool orange highlights on old Victorian buildings.
No, I know, I'm actually really, I could, everything is white.
With the blue doors.
There's a lot to be said for, like, color. But being to conform to everything around you, like, would you have to do white? I know this is kind of minutia of, and it is open to interpretation, so presumably whoever's on the board would like, be reasonable and.
Right.
Yeah.
Again, this is the first kind of draft of it, so if you want to, I welcome suggestions and either make it more specific, less specific, that kind of thing, make it.
And just to be clear, our current zoning ordinance allows, or by special exception allows for multiple units of three to six units.
Correct.
Without these.
Correct.
Without these special exception criteria.
Correct.
The change we're making is adding these criteria, which I would think is helpful whether we're going to allow for three to six as multifamily or beyond. The, the substantial change really is the 12-unit max for multifamily housing.
If, if we're not going to do anything to change the allowance of units up to six units, should this specify from six to 12 units instead of three to 12 units? Otherwise, we're going to have two sets of criteria for units between three and six. Would that make sense? So if somebody, if somebody.
If we, what I'm saying, what I suggested to help avoid that is this all multifamily buildings would have to go through this.
Okay.
More than two is what you're saying.
Three or more, yes.
Three or more, okay, alright.
And the existing structures that have.
They need to go through it, they need to get a special exception anyway.
Okay.
And the ones that are in order that are already at, between three and six units have set the neighborhood characteristics, so that, you know, kind of by definition, they can't be.
Okay, so I, I missed that, so thank you.
The only other thing I would ask you to consider is I went ahead and dropped this in as maintain, because we do require special exceptions now, just keeping it as such. Whereas we had discussed, do we want to make it a conditional use permit, and then it wouldn't go to the zoning board, it would come to this board. But again, right now, three to six units need to go to the zoning board, so I just felt that was more consistent, right now at least. They would still need to come to this planning board for site plan review. So a conditional use permit is actually a little bit more of a streamlined process because it's usually done at the same time, and we'll find this board and the same, you know. You get the conditional use permit for the use and the site plan for the site design, they kind of go hand in hand.
I, I like it continuing to go as a special exception because that's pretty much how our zoning ordinance operates. Until we start moving, if, if we start moving to more conditional use permits, I think that changes how we operate, how the ZBA operates. So I think in the spirit of not making substantial changes and keeping, keeping those sort of separation, I, I think is not a terrible idea the way we are currently structured, so. What do other folks think? Mike?
I'll let anybody else speak before I do, or, but. I had a, a few things that I wanted to bring to the board's attention. Before COVID, I would advertise an apartment, and I'd get four, maybe five calls on it. And I'd narrow it down, pre-screening people on the phone to one or two people to look at it, and I'd pick the best out of the two. COVID had a real huge impact on the rentals in Plymouth. And I couldn't figure it out because early on in COVID, I advertised an apartment, instead of getting four or five calls, I got 72. And I had to go back on Facebook and count every single one, and then I had it on Craigslist, I think I got four or five. But there were 68 inquiries that wanted to come look at that apartment, and I'm not exaggerating, it was 72. And I couldn't figure it out till we started talking about this. And I have a unique perspective that I can share with this board because I am on the planning board and I do have rentals. And it was very, it started to become clear because with those 72 people that called that wanted to come look at that apartment right off, I again pre-screened and had a ton of questions, and I narrowed it down to three or four people that I would come and have them look at the apartment, and there were one or two people that I would have said yes to, and I picked the best one. Same amount of good, or same amount of people that I would have rented to. But it became clear why I was getting 72 people, and I don't know if anybody has, has the answer, if it's clear to you too, but when those people were sitting at home, whether, and, and these people, most of them, were not renting apartments at the time. They were at home or living with a friend or living with a family member, a lot of the responses. And once the COVID payments started going out, there were, that's when it all just jumped and went out of control. Because people now had, that maybe were living with a family member, they now had money in their pocket, 12, $2,400 plus whatever part-time job they had. And they were now able to afford an apartment, and I think what's happening here might be just temporary. And it might solve itself, but the majority, far majority, 95% to even higher of those inquiries, those 72 people were not Plymouth people. They were predominantly Laconia, there were some Belmont, there was other communities that wasn't Plymouth. And Plymouth was trying to fend for themselves, trying to get an apartment. And all of a sudden, rents jumped. And my daughter included was living in Plymouth, and the rents jumped. Because of that demand of people coming out of the woodwork, which were not renting anywhere, all of a sudden now. And I'm not sure exactly where this proposal to address this came from, and I, I appreciate it, I, I get it. But this board always talks about, well, we go back to our master plan to get our direction where we want to make proposed changes. And I'm not sure where I see that in the master plan, because just a few months ago, the emphasis was making lots bigger to make it harder for people to build a house where you need three acres instead of one, which was trying to limit. And now, we're talking about not six units per building, but more. And so, I'm not sure where this is coming from. I do know that we did have a speaker who talked about workforce housing, and I get that. And I get how this proposal of using one roof and one foundation, economies of scale, it's cheaper to build, and I get that. But the cheaper part is not for the person who's going to rent it, the cheaper part is for the developer. Yeah, it's going to be cheaper for him to build and make these units, but that's not going to necessarily transcend to the actual renter. The price will still be the same. So, I want everybody to be aware of that. The savings are for the developer. Couple more things. I think we're going to find that, once things go back to normal, that rents are going to come back down. And I, you think that's, rents won't come down, they will, when this, when there's people that are, aren't able to pay their rent anymore and they go back to a family member, there won't be the demand in tenants. Landlords will be fighting for the same tenants that are Plymouth residents. And in order to fill their apartments, rents will go down, and that will happen. I am worried that this could have a, a negative effect on the tax rates in Plymouth, and that's my biggest concern. That if we tie up property, because it will be like a vacuum, people looking to build apartment houses will come to Plymouth that may have just stayed and built in Laconia or Camden or wherever else. This will be a huge vacuum coming right into Plymouth to build, and that will bring in folks that may have kids, the school system, maybe our school won't be able to support if we get this vacuum of building going on. Whereas otherwise, it might have been taking care of single-family homes, where a single-family home might be worth $300,000 and we get quite a bit of, of income for the tax rate for one or two kids or three kids versus a large building on that lot that may have 12 units with two kids. 24 students versus two or three. So that's a concern. I think that because this problem has just appeared, that maybe this is kind of reactionary planning. And maybe it might be worth it to wait another year, see if the problem is still here and address it in 12 months. And it's not going to hurt anything to wait it out for 12 months, but you will see a different, you will see something completely different in 12 months than it is now. That's my guess, if the COVID payments stop. The other thing is, I would love to, and I asked at the last meeting, what the fire department and what the police chief might think about this? Because it, there is added stress to having that many people, when a building catches on fire, it's now impacting 12 homes, not six or three. When you have concerns with police and there's 12 units in there in that close proximity. My experience is, it may become an issue. I love the character of the way Plymouth is now, and I'd like to see it stay, and, and I'm not saying no against every single change. But I'd be very concerned about this, and I think the planning board would be smart to take our time with this, let's get it right, let's not do anything that's reactionary. And if it's our mandate to work on economic development for this town, this is surely going to add a burden for the town financially in the tax rates of those that are living in single-family homes that are already complaining about what they're paying in taxes. Just wait for the vacuum and for multiple units and many more kids in the school system. Because they will skip plans in Laconia, skip plans in Bristol, wherever else, they'll be here.
I may address like one small part of this. We're not talking merely about a blip in the rental market. There are long-term numbers here that point to a shortage in housing here and elsewhere. And this is not going to just go away. Rental prices may come down a bit, and those payments have stopped. But the larger issue of a shortage of housing nationwide is going to remain. And that is what we're trying to address. And are there issues with taxes and other things to consider? Yes. These are also more employable people who can add to the economy as well as, I mean, that's a bigger issue than what we're talking about right here, which is a planning issue. But even there, I think there's another part of the story to be told, and I don't want to address every one of your points, but I think.
I would echo those sentiments. Years ago, when I was considering a 55 and over development in a town I used to live in on a planning board, someone presented an article that addressed the economic impact of over 55 communities, and they actually said that those people tend to take more services and contribute less to the local economy than a family would. So I think there are a lot of inconsistencies and misconceptions about some of your observations, I'm not going to agree with most of them. I do think that we're seeing a long-term increase in need for affordable housing, new construction. You know, you're, you're hard-pressed to get into a new house for under $300,000, and that's not affordable for most people. I do think that Plymouth should have affordable housing for the people who want to work in Plymouth. You know, we certainly have increasing job opportunities, I don't think people who want to work at Market Basket or Hannaford or any of the other Walmart, not everybody wants to drive to Thornton or Romney or Dorchester. And I think that, you know, there should be affordable opportunities in Plymouth. You know, I, I know that our school has capacity. I'm, I'm on the school board, I'm familiar with the budget, I know that it seems high, but that seems to be what the voters in this community want. So, I don't think that providing, my, my guess is that if we do provide affordable housing opportunities for younger families and, and younger people, you know, we're probably going to see less people living in 50-year-old trailers. You know, there's a lot of that around too, you know, if you drive through, there are people living in homes that are, should have been condemned 20 years ago. And, and I think my, I think any amount of affordable housing that we put out there is, is good for, whether it be our community or neighboring communities, I do think it's a benefit in general.
I would say if the people, if these, and I'm assuming this was the childcare, extra money that has been coming to folks, if that's what's keeping people from having to live with relatives in more affordable situations, that to me speaks more towards the, the challenges that we do have, that if people can't afford to live on their own, you know, that is the problem, so.
And I, I don't think it should all be in Plymouth, but I think that every, every community should have affordable opportunities for housing. And, and I think that what we have currently is prohibitive in terms of, like, you know. There have been numerous inquiries into the building department about building unit, units more than, with more than six unit, buildings with more than six units, and, you know, there's a demand. You know, our building department is, department is receiving these, that's why we're dealing with this.
Oh, yeah, I know there is.
Other folks have comments about this?
So Mike, before COVID, you were feeling like your apartments weren't in high demand?
Correct. There were, my rents are pretty cheap. There were, my rents are pretty cheap, so they always tend to be rented. But when I would put an ad in, maybe four people might, might call. And you always see a cycle. And the cycle is, and people don't know this, but the cycle is when the, when the college builds another dorm, you may have an empty apartment for a month, or a few weeks. In town, where the rents are much higher, it might even be a few months that your apartment is empty. But when the college pulled their students back into the dorm, just a few short months ago, landlords were scrambling to fill their units. And there were empty apartments all over Plymouth. And it wasn't until COVID that all those apartments got taken up. When the college grows and they outgrow their dorms, and then those students start living in town, it forces those that are renting homes in town to move out of town. And that's when mine fill up. But that's why my rents are cheap. But we've got to realize, there's, there's going to be vacancies again, because it's going to go back to the way it was. And I'd rather have those vacancies in a smaller unit, six or less, than trying to have all these empty apartments. And there was something else, and I, maybe I'll think of it later.
Steve?
I don't want to repeat the presentation we saw in September or so, but I think there's the other converging issues of units turning into short-term rentals, more people deciding to retire to New Hampshire, remote workers, people living in smaller and smaller households as the divorce rate continues to go up, and people live longer. Like, there's a bunch of reasons why this is happening. But the vacancy rate in most of New Hampshire is less than 1%.
Right now, yes.
And has been. And at 5%, you have some competition for price and stuff. And George shared all that data. But I think there's a lot of issues, and I'm not trying to, I'm not trying to discount what you've seen, because you may be onto something as well. But I don't think that this is an issue that's going to completely go away. We're not going to have a need for new units?
I think with real estate houses, real estate prices for single-family houses being high, we're seeing conversion of rentals to, people are selling homes that were rentals too. So, their apartments going off the market, which is putting additional demand for the apartments that are available. It sounds like, I think there's a question from the audience.
I, I'm going to keep it at the board for right now, so.
That's fine, I'm good with that.
Yep. Other board comments? To be clear, we do, we, June, you said this, that there is something that if they're greater than six units, there has to be, it has to be connected to sewer. So, that limits any unit greater than six, which is what we currently have, to really anything that's along the, where, what's served by.
Or is it anything greater than three now, according to this language? Number one on the list for three to 12 units.
So, I'm looking at, onsite sewage disposal is not permitted for buildings with greater than six units.
Oh, six units. That's different than the top number.
Yep. So, we're not talking about large apartment buildings popping up
Throughout the exit.
All over the place. It's, it's really limited to where it's already served by sewer.
Or someone is willing to extend, pay to extend sewer lines.
Currently, you can build up to a six-unit building on a big septic system. If you have the right soils, you know. I think we have, I know of one in town, I think.
So, that's an interesting topic John just brought. Right now, you could build up to a six-unit, as long as you have the proper septic and design, and you have good soils. In this, it's saying you, in order to have now three units.
Actually, I misread it.
You did.
I, I didn't see the caveat at the end there, it's six units for item number one.
Last sentence from.
Last sentence of item one.
Last sentence of item number one, yeah.
Okay. Thanks.
All right, so what do folks think about where we are with this?
I like it. I like it, I would be in support of this. I would like to commend the work that's been done on this.
Yep.
Yep.
Thanks for putting this together, June, it's helpful to see this written out. Mark?
I like it, I appreciate the information that's in here about preserving character. I am kind of one of those people that enjoy New England character. Something was to go in downtown, I would like it to fit somehow, and not be the most modern structure in the world. That's just my personal belief, but I'm going to leave that in the hands of the ZBA, I guess. But I, I like that part of this being in here, because I think that is important for the character, if you will, of the town. So, and I, I'm fine with continuing to explore going to 12 units.
Carl, anything to add?
No, I agree, it's, it's a good piece.
Susan?
I like the idea of keeping with the character, but I think if you're going to have 12 units being on the regular public septic, it's not going to be keeping with, that's a big building. 12 units is a large building, and that would be on the public sewer system, so it's obviously going to be in this. So, I, I think it's a lot.
Mike, you sure? Anything to add?
Again, up at Tenny, it was an economy of scale while we were looking for eight to 12 units. Because the amount of taxes that we pay, not to complain, about $136,000 a year, we have to offset that with a lot of rentals up there for skiing, or recreational industry. So, we're purely looking at from a recreational standpoint, and we have the sewage and everything, so. I'm fine with it, this is great. And by the way, I just want to go on record, I am not the developer out there anymore at Tenny. There's going to be new developers coming and presenting to you in a couple of weeks that has taken over the project. I still have 11 units up there that I'm developing, and some other stuff. But there's a new developer that will be coming and presenting to you folks up at Tenny. So, I'm not, Mike at Tenny.
Just Mike.
Just Mike.
Anything else that folks want to add? Do we want to move this forward right away? Do we want to sort of mull over? I think we heard, I can't remember if you just said this now, or last time, eight to 12 is sort of the, there are eight units of, eight-unit buildings versus 12-unit buildings. Do we want to take a vote to move this forward today, or just mull it over a little bit? I'm going to get to that, hang on. Jeez, you guys.
Glad you can get over that.
What do folks think?
I would be.
I'm good.
I would welcome public comment.
Okay.
But I'm fairly confident that I would like to move forward.
General, like, so folks are good to move forward with the 12 units?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. All right. The moment you all have been waiting for, public comment. Please step up to the microphone, and remember, we're just talking about the housing, multiple-unit dwellings section, so.
Two bits. First, you know, bravo for the attempt. I appreciate what you've put the work into here. I would ask you first, under item five, you're creating a tough situation for the ZBA, because what you're talking about, if a bad situation exists somewhere, the neighbor can have a worse, or as bad a situation. You don't want to expand a bad situation. So, it shouldn't, it shouldn't be something that judges a project based on what the neighbor has done to his or her property. That's how I read that. The rest of that, the rest of five is fine, but I don't think you want to compare it to the neighbor. I, I would, furthermore, I've been in Plymouth a long time, and I can remember way back in the late 60s, when we were faced with the issue of what to do with Fox Park. And the same argument occurred, that you folks are looking at right here. Which is, I can build a bunch of six-unit buildings in this area, or I can build 12-unit buildings, or larger, in this area. So, then the town decided to go with the larger buildings. The problem is, in a nutshell, and any one of you can drive down there and take a look, there's no place for the automobiles, there's no place for the kids to play. If you're going to do this, you've got to have a larger lot size. Now, I realize that some people might not want a larger lot size. It's a density issue on the size of the, of the footprint of the property. We have a height requirement, so you're limited there. You've got to go this way. If you start covering the whole lot with impervious surface, no-play areas, parking lots, it's, it's a mistake. I don't see any problem with, with a three to six. We've lived with a three to six, it's been fine. Fox Park was a mistake. Never should have swallowed that. But, you know, you learn. Other than that, I think the idea of the criteria is workable with the ZBA. It's a better document than what we have now for special exceptions. But I, I would vigorously oppose expanding beyond six units in a building. Thank you.
So, I wonder, I'm not sure if Fox Park apartments would actually meet these criteria.
They got a variance.
Are you talking about the apartments?
Yeah.
The Fox Park apartments, or the income-qualified housing that's off the entrance to Fox Park?
Talking about the Fox Park apartments, I think.
Apartments, there are 12 units in a building.
I did look up Fox Park apartments, and it did, at some point, we found some documentation that it got a variance at some point in late 60s or early 70s. I can't remember the, but I could not figure out what, we have no record readily available of what that case was, so I wasn't going to dig too far.
It wasn't on Zoom?
Well, in terms of how, you know, what the criteria for variance were then, because.
I could have said anything you want.
All right, next up.
My name is John Randlett, former selectman, and worked on the planning board for seven or eight years. And when we're going from six to 12 units, are we talking about classifying it as affordable work housing? Because if we do that, if, if I'm not mistaken, we looked at this four or five years ago, and the tax rate for, for affordable or work housing is not based on the cost of the building, the valuation of the building. It's based on the revenue generated. They were looking at doing some of that on, on Fairgrounds Road. And that, that has a great impact on the taxes when you're looking at the price per unit, and basing the property tax on that figure versus the valuation, the appraised valuation of the property. You've got a lot of people in Plymouth, my wife has lived in the same house for 77 years. And our taxes in the last 17 years have gone from about $3,000 to $7,500. And there's a lot of people, I mean, I mean, we need to do more than, more than we're doing now. We, we need to look, we've, Plymouth is the hub for everything. And the people in Plymouth, the taxpayers in Plymouth are paying for it. We, we've got taxing, and I think probably 55 to 60% of our taxable property is nonprofit now. We have the hospital taking homes, putting in parking lots. They're nonprofit, no taxes. We lose that tax base. And it's happened with midstate in lieu of taxes. And they go non-public, they pay nothing now, you know. And these are the things we have to look at before we do this for people that have been here for multi-generations. And, you know, I don't know where the classification comes from, you know, a 12-unit apartment to workforce housing. Because workforce housing has a different tax rate, if I'm not mistaken, Bill.
Workforce housing is market rate.
Well, you're correct with the thing on Fairgrounds Road.
But that's not workforce, that's, that's subsidized.
Subsidized, yep.
Yeah. The folks that we had that came and presented a couple of months ago, the Lakes Region Community Developers, which is a nonprofit, they pay full taxes on all their properties, and they made a point of saying that, so.
I think that's a slightly separate issue anyway. We're not necessarily talking here about workforce or affordable housing. We're just talking about housing.
Right. And it could be very expensive units.
Talking about what?
Housing, in general.
In general.
Including condominiums.
Right.
It could be those things, it could be like condominiums, or anything else.
Well, I mean, it, it depends on the classification, I'm assuming, as, as far as the taxing goes. But, I mean, you know, we've lost so much with the hospital, with midstate, with other entities that have, you know, caused our tax rates to go so high. And, you know, people, people are having to leave, you know. So, thank you very much.
Thank you.
John said a lot of the things that I wanted to say. I'm totally against going beyond six. You end up with a higher tax rate. Some of you disagree with that, but I've seen it in the last 60 years. The town of Plymouth cannot afford to have an excessive number of units where it's costing more for the town, as far as the schools, the sewer, the roads, the, all the facilities in the town. It costs more to handle those when you have excess people that are not paying enough taxes to pay for that. One of the big things in the master plan is you want to encourage businesses to come in. Well, if the tax rate is real high, you aren't going to get businesses come in unless they're going to get a tax abatement, which isn't going to do the town any good. So, you really need to consider what effect this is going to have on the town. There are enough other towns in New Hampshire that do not have the college sitting in them, that have taken up all the taxable property in the middle of town, that can deal with the housing problem in New Hampshire. Plymouth cannot afford to do that. The taxpayers in the town of Plymouth cannot afford to do that. So, I'm opposed to it, and I hope you will reconsider.
I won't be long, because you guys have heard me talk for the past couple of months about this. There's, I know we're talking about seven to 12 units and increasing that. And we talked about, or it was talked before about like an overlay district to allow these units, and I think that might be something maybe worth revisiting. And I know that people are thinking, man, if we just revisit stuff time and time and time again, we're never going to get something accomplished. But what is going to happen if we bump this up to 12 units? Like, it just, it's, the word affordable gets used most, for the, most of the people in this room, and most of the people on board. Affordable means something where someone making a decent wage can afford something at a decent price that's not going to go broke. When the people from the state and people from Lakes Region Community Developers step into this room and use the word affordable, and smugly laugh at me when I ask them to define it, what they are saying is subsidized housing. So, the question that needs to be answered is, will Plymouth be a better town with more subsidized housing? That's a very, very general statement. That's why we might need to look at overlay places, such as Tenny Mountain, so he can, or that organization can help grow that. Maybe that's another thing. But behind all this, I know we're talking about just units. We're not talking about nonprofits, and fiscal protection, and stuff in the school, and impact on the teachers, or, you know, all that stuff, which is, you know, true, good questions, I think, for everyone to think about. But what this is going to equate to in the majority is, is. But what this is gonna equate to in the majority is subsidized housing, what this community needs. And if it is, awesome, like, and if, but if it isn't, then I think, when you think about that, because that's what this is going to come to. And that's, and I do know, like, Lakes, like, you know, Laconia Area Land Trust or Lakes Region Community Developers, a huge organization, like, and I came down here, like, ready to say, like, hey, you guys have, you know, $5.8 million worth of property, you don't pay a dime. And I added up all their taxes, and I was like, oh, holy cow, they do pay property taxes on this. So, yeah, that was an impressive thing. I will 100% agree with that. But that's what it boils down to, this. It's not going to be affordable for people that don't meet a certain criteria that fit the housing and urban development standards. So, I agree, like, we need affordable, I'm not, like, affordable places where just someone that doesn't quite meet the HUD standards for subsidized housing, 100%, we need that stuff, because everyone needs a place to live. But I don't know if a developer comes in to, and, you know, puts in, you know, a couple 12-unit buildings. I don't know if that's going to catch the person that's making over those HUD limits but under the amount to buy a $385,000 house where the taxes are $8,500 a year. So, I do thank you guys for hearing me out one last time.
Can I ask you a question?
Yes, please.
If you were going to lay out an overlay district, are there any areas of town you would include that don't currently have sewer?
No, I think, because the overlay district in my head that I'm thinking of is Tenny Mountain.
So, can I point out that what we have here would only...
Which that has sewer.
Right.
Yeah.
Yep. So, I mean, we're kind of there.
Yep, the overlay district I was referring to, yeah, it does have sewer, yeah.
I think it wouldn't include certain places that have sewer right now as well.
You could, I mean, if you're strictly addressing an overlay district to promote this, within and limited to certain areas, that would work. But, I mean, this is a little bit more permissive in saying, you know, you can go with more than six units if there's sewer.
We had a little bit of this conversation last time.
I missed it, sorry.
So, thank you for hearing me out. And I think this is, these are great, just looking at them again, like, the, like, item three with the character of the buildings, like, this is all good stuff. So, I think, and I think, like, you said, Steve, with the character of the buildings, like, you don't want to see that tie someone's hands where, like, someone's like, holy cow, like, I need the right sconces on my entryway to build something. So, right, it's, it gives, and I guess the dangerous part there, which I'm not a professional is, the dangerous part is, we don't want absolute interpretation, so it's literally like Sue's taste versus Carl's taste, for everyone's taste just takes their thing, so... No, I think, you know, this says some great stuff in it, and thank you guys for hearing me out one more time. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, I gotta, I have to add something. You've got to look at the future of what Plymouth is. Right now, the prediction is 50% of the colleges in the United States are going to go out of business in the next 10 years. Demographics just don't support universities and colleges the way they have. There are rumors all over the place about which colleges are going to get hit, who's going to suffer. The enrollment's decreasing here. So, what's going to happen? We're going to wind up with the student rentals going vacant. Rents will fall. That will occur. That's just supply and demand. Is that good, I suppose? It's not bad. Bad for the landlords who have paid, capitalized what they've spent. But do we want to add additional housing on top of a decreasing market? I just don't think that's wise.
Bill?
I'm not certain the market is really decreasing. In fact, you know, just recently, and just not simply because of COVID, Plymouth had three houses for sale total in the town. So, there's like a real big demand for housing, both either multi, you know, housing or single-family. And families aren't anathema. They, you know, families are actually healthy. Kids are good, you know? And I'm not thinking that we'd overpower the educational system in Plymouth if we encouraged more families to move into town, because we're all getting older. And New Hampshire's getting very old. No offense, David, but, and I'm looking to be like the average age of a New Hampshire resident, so, you know, it's not quite healthy, but...
Can I share one thing about, so, some of the houses that are, there are some new homes that are for sale on Crescent Drive that are manufactured homes that are listed for just under $200 a square foot. I mean, that's what's, that's what's being sold as affordable homes in Plymouth right now, manufactured homes at just under $200 a square foot. Please.
I just, I have one question. Has anybody talked to the Water and Sewer as far as how much more they're going to be able to handle? Because I know 20 years ago, they were reaching their limit. So, do we want to encourage more housing? And then, I mean, I don't know where the Water and Sewer, they have, don't have much room to expand down there. And so, if you consider that, if you check with the Water and Sewer to see how much more they can take?
Or Bill, either.
No, I'm not entirely certain this is a solution, but they're disengaging all the stormwater from their service, so they're not treating the storm, they will no longer treat the stormwater when that project goes through. So, that will...
They'll add capacity.
Okay, we got it.
So, I did mention this idea in a, not in any great detail, certainly not really getting into these criteria, but I did mention it to Jason Randall and Don Jutton from Water and Sewer last week, I think it was. And they, I would certainly go back and ask them more detail, but they were like, yeah, we'd love more customers. So, they've, I think they're, they do have the capacity, is my understanding. And they will gain some through improvements in the system that they're working on. Sorry, I have some other things to address at some point.
I was just going to say that, to answer the question, we had Jason in a couple years ago, we were working on the master plan to ask if we were going in the right direction, and should we be looking at additional users or should we be staying away from that? And he said, yes, please. Kind of explained their long-range plan.
They had even presented something to us recently that showed an expansion of sewer as well, offering it to more places where they're not currently, so... Yeah, go ahead.
I'm Taylor, I'm a Plymouth State student. I just wanted to comment about the, about like the enrollment and about the increase of like off-campus apartments. As a student, personally, our policies have changed. I'm also a CA, and our policies are that we can't have guests on campus currently. And I also think that's due to the increase of off-campus housing, because a lot of students are moving off-campus because they can't have friends, family, anyone come to their room. And also, I think COVID has to do with a lot of people, like, unenrolling from campus. So, yeah, I don't think it's a dying market. I agree with you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I can't help it, sorry.
Go ahead, Bill.
Regarding PSU, though, so, I know PSU is probably, you know, considered like maybe on the chopping block, but I know the administration's, you know, doing a good job as far as what they're doing with, you know, the enrollment, because apparently the enrollment was up this past year. And if you look at Keene State, I'm not saying one's better than the other, but Keene State's like half of the enrollment, what they used to be like 15 years ago?
Yeah, currently, we have no open rooms in Merrill or Langdon Place. I can say that, because, I know, yeah, we don't have any open rooms, so...
It's not to say it's, it might, you know, head south, but, you know, currently...
Currently, we don't have any, any rooms, so...
Mike?
Bill, are they doubling up or just, are they single? How are they doing rooms right now?
All of the rooms are doubled, and I'm a CA from Grafton, and we only have two single rooms per floor. And mine's all girls' floor, so I can only have, I actually only have one, actually, I'm like, I only have one single on per floor. So, in my building, it's a seven-floor building, so we have seven singles available in a 300, like, a 300-student building, so...
Ask your question.
So, seven students can have their own room. And then the rest of them are doubles. Langdon is doubles and triples.
So, you said, you don't mind if I ask your question?
Yeah, sure, you can ask me.
You said that there are no guests allowed to come into the dorm to visit?
Yeah, so like, my parents can't come, my significant other can't come.
Did you say that's impacting the rentals in town because of that, that they're taking up rentals?
I think so. I know a lot of my friends have recently moved off-campus because, just because of the restrictions of campus, because, like, dorming on campus is so restrictive, so they've gone to off-campus rentals, it's much easier for them to live.
My daughter's college is the same way. A point, if you ask any landlord in Plymouth what their vacancy rate was pre-COVID just a few months ago, they would tell you they're just barely getting by. And many of them were prepared to ask the Select Board for abatements on taxes because their income was so low for, based on all the empty apartments. And they didn't feel they should be paying the same high taxes with such a reduction in income. And so, they were looking to have something done, help with the town, so their taxes wouldn't be as high. I like, and that's almost every landlord across the board that I, that had come and talked to me, and I would ask them, how are things with the apartments? Same story all the way around Plymouth, just a few months ago, prior to COVID. The other thing, there are developments in, I know of one in Bristol, I was part of it. It was called a recreational development, where you were not allowed to live there year-round, so it wouldn't impact the town, but yet bring in income. And I think where it's already some sort of recreation designation at Tenny, what a great idea to have some sort of overlay, and I don't know if you can use that word overlay, but in conjunction of a special exception or something for that, for recreational use, where they come up and use the ski slopes and spend money in Plymouth and go back to Mass. How cool would that be? I don't know how you would work that, but a recreation would allow that. I would love to continue to explore that option, so that we can still have more than six units and derive income and have a net benefit to the town. I think there's very few people that would disagree that Tenny Mountain is the spot for it, so...
I think the college enrollment is going to fluctuate like it always has. History just always repeats itself. These units, if they get put in 12 units, they're forever, they're going to be there. And I think this influx of people coming to New Hampshire and this area, I think that's, a lot of people are moving here because it's a great place and whatever, it may be cheaper than where they are, they can work remotely. I'm not sure that's long-term. I'm not sure that that's going to last forever. It may, it may not. But I just think we, I think we need to do some more work on it. The overlay idea, I think, is a great idea. So, I just think we need some more work on it. I just don't see a 12-unit something in town or close to town or because it's on a public sewer. I just think it needs a little more tweaking. And June, thank you for all the work you've done on it. It is...
My only addition I would make to that is, if we do pass this, it's not like next year there's going to be 30 new, like, they're everywhere. It just, it gives us the option, it gives developers the option to do this if they perceive a demand for it. This doesn't mean it's all going to happen, like, we're going to have a glut of apartments all of a sudden. It just means we have the ability, if there's a demand for it, and the developer can make that choice to go forward with this. So, we're giving them the option.
Let me just speak up. I just want, there's had a few comments here. I just want to make it clear that what we put in, what I drafted here, what we've been talking about is just some criteria to allow more units per building, and there's nothing in here about the affordability aspect. So, there's other workforce housing type of statements and components in zoning ordinance, and I reviewed statutes on it in some of other communities, where you have to have a certain percentage at a market rate, you know, of any kind of development. That's not what this is. So, this, you know, would allow more units per building that could be very high-end and very expensive, so they could be lower cost. We just gives that possibility, as John said, I think, it pretty well. I guess the one thing I just also feel like with having that tie to sewer in particular, especially for the bigger buildings, while, yes, they could go up towards Tenny and out that direction, you are kind of limiting a lot of the area of town, and therefore, having that higher density keeps it closer in many cases where, you know, where we already have existing roads, whereas a new subdivision with a cul-de-sac out in the middle of, you know, out somewhere that may add 12 homes, you're going to have costs for busing to get there. And what, I had a conversation with somebody of a property that's like on the far outskirts of town, and they're looking at a, you know, they've had, called me twice about a single-family home type of development, and it, you can't get much further away from the school. It would be a new road that, you know, eventually the town would need to take over years out. And so, the town plow would have to drive all the way across town and take that over. Roads are incredibly expensive, so, you know, in kind of an unspoken way, this keeps this higher level of density where we already have utilities, water, sewer, and roads in particular. And by default, it's going to bring, in many cases, closer to the school, which will cut down on busing. But I think the biggest factor is, you know, we just think about single-family homes and where those would start to develop if somebody really wants to put in 12 or 10 homes, it's going to be on new roads far away from town. So, you know, 15-minute bus ride, and the plow has got to get there, too. So, just, just a thought. And, you know, and then also can gobble up forests, wetlands, that kind of thing. We talked, started the meeting with wetland impacts, so, figure it around.
So, I think what I'm hearing from folks is that we're all A-OK on the special exception criteria, that we're good to move forward on that. It sounds like a lot of us are interested in maybe moving to, up the maximum number of units to 12. I think we should talk about that further, because functionally, if this is something we want to see pass at town meeting, do we want to move the needle down a little less to get eight or 10 units as the maximum number, if this is something that maybe is more likely to pass through our, pass with our voters? So, just something to throw out there. So, I think we need to think about units, a number of units, a little bit further, because I think it would be a win if we could move it up just a little bit, even if it's not the maximum number that we have in here, so...
I am a little concerned about the language in "five," about comparing the external impacts, comparing them to the abutting properties, you know? I do think we should probably evaluate if there's a more subjective standard we can use there in terms of, you know, creating disturbance.
We don't necessarily want to, you know, make them create more disturbance, because that's what already happens in the neighborhood.
Right. But other than that, I'm happy with it. And honestly, I think, I think if we move forward with 12, there are still going to be sites that are, site conditions are going to limit the development. You know, you might only, you might have a plan to put in certain-sized buildings, but a 12-unit building isn't going to fit here, but it, we can fit eight there, we might put 12 over here, but, you know, I think there is still, you know, the nature of land in New Hampshire is still a limitation, and I think it's, you're going to be hard pressed to find an area where you can put 12-unit buildings that are under 35 feet high. If you, you can have a smaller footprint and go three stories high, which you could make that work under 35 feet, but, but I think in more, in reality, it's probably going to be a two-story building with a bigger footprint. That's, that's hard to cite. We don't have, we have a lot of hills, and most of those hills are hiding shallow bedrock.
Chair?
Hang on a second, I got a, I got a board member who wants to speak. Come on up.
No, I'm not talking, just in general.
This is, is this about the housing discussion?
It's about what's going on here. The Safe Planning Office suggested zoning boards meet with the planning board when they're doing this kind of a thing. We haven't had a meeting with the planning board for over five years.
Would we, can we invite the zoning board to discuss these changes in the next, at our next meeting?
Yeah, let's save comments that aren't about the housing, well, and more about overall board function to after this discussion, because I want to wrap up the housing discussion first.
So.
Mike?
So I, I appreciate, like Sue said, everything that June is going through. I, with putting all this work in, and for the woman, I never remember her name.
The professional planner we've been hiring to help us, Susan Slack?
Correct, Susan Slack, yeah. She's a professional, I'm not. But I don't, I'm seeing that there could be a need for this. There's people here that are, that are, seem to be gung-ho on it. We heard from the residents that not so much. And I think with the situation that we're in with COVID, it wouldn't hurt to wait a year and revisit this 12 months from now. But I definitely don't think we're ready to put this in front of the, the public for this March. And so I would propose we wait. And it could be in a year from now. You're talking to your landlords that are, maybe live next to you, and he says, yeah, I have empty apartments again. I'm so glad you didn't do that. And, but you're going to find, things are going to change after COVID. And it's premature to be putting this to a vote, because I'm telling you, when developers are looking at different locations and they see Plymouth, oh, 12 now, I can save a lot of money. And tenants aren't going to save, but the landlord is, they're going to come to Plymouth. And there's no way to stop them once you open the floodgates.
All right, so what I said before was, it sounds like we are in general good with the special exception criteria. I think maybe a little further discussion on, which has really, all that does is add a little more direction for the ZBA when somebody is looking to put in a three, a unit that's, or a building that has, a multifamily building that has three to six units. Think that is good for us to move forward with. Let's discuss the number of units. Let's, let's discuss that at a meeting coming up. June, do we have much on the docket coming up for?
The next meeting is the
Eighteenth?
Eighteenth. And there's one ADU application.
Okay. So we can, we'll continue this discussion at our next meeting. So, because I think we don't just, you know, even if we are going to push this off a year, which I'm not sure if that's what we're going to do at this point. But even if we were, it's not like we just stop talking about it right now. This is an ongoing process, so.
I agree.
So let's, let's take some time. And we can open up this discussion about the number of units at our next meeting. That work for folks?
Could, one other thing. Can we explore, and could this, Susan Slack, explore the possibility of something for the recreation, recreational use at Tenney? Is there any way forward on that to at least get something out of this?
We could make that part of the discussion, I think, for the next meeting. I'd need to have a little more clarity about what that means. Because if it's to just allow this kind of higher number of units in that, some kind of part of town, that's fine. But you've mentioned a couple of times, like.
It wouldn't be year-round use.
Not for year-round use. I'm not sure we can do that legally.
And I think actually, I know I've heard people mention spot zoning in the past, but creating an exception that applies specifically to one parcel is the definition of the spot zoning.
It's a big enough zone, it's a big enough.
I think also, we'd be, if we're going to consider something like that for some place like Tenney Mountain, which is sewer, I think it's, it's silly for us to not consider it along Tenney Mountain Highway as well, where there already is a ton of infrastructure, so.
Your, so your, your real question, though, about recreational zones is for people that own, that wouldn't be their residence. It'll be for second homes only.
I'm thinking of the possibility for the new developer. I have no idea what his plans are. But it could be something like Steel Hill. Who knows where you buy into some sort of timeshare? That that possibility probably brings a lot of money into that, into Sandburn, probably helps the tax rate quite a bit. And there might be that option. And who knows? Rather than adding students to the, to the school, Tenney Mountain can be in a really good position. I, I just don't know, I'm not a professional, Susan, might have some ideas on what could be an option. And with the ski area, it makes sense.
I just want to make a quick comment. As Mike, I just want to remind everybody that the Tenney environment up there, again, we own our own sewage. We have 535,000 gallons a day. That's put aside for us. That's 10% of the capacity of the town's sewage. We're going to use the 23,000 gallons. Second, we own and control all the roadways up there. The town does not tax the burden with any of the road structure up there from an infrastructure standpoint. I just wanted to throw that out there because we're not adding a tax burden to the town. And being a recreational community, again, a lot of these homes that we're looking at putting up there are actually second-tier homes and getaway homes. So we're trying to mitigate taxing our school system with students. So I just wanted to throw that out there as a, hopefully a positive.
Practical point, when you put this thing forward, if you would sever the six to 12 from the criteria for a, a special exception, we wouldn't have to have, if, if there was a debate in the town over the six to 12, it wouldn't destroy the ability for us to create the new criteria for a special exception, which I think you've done a great job on, except for number five.
Thank you.
Good point.
I just want to reiterate a comment that was made earlier. Maybe it would be a good idea to, as the conversation moves forward, to bump up the units, to talk to Chief Hutchins and Deputy Chief Buffington, just for some thoughts from, or, or, you know, Chief of Fire, I don't know who that is for now, but just some other people that handle things like that in the town. That's all. Thank you.
All right. Is everybody in a good place with zoning? Are we good to move on?
We're going to table this one for our next meeting. June, do you think? Can you take a crack at the language of five and see if there's a better standard we can use there?
That's our next meeting or our next work meeting, or?
I think if we've only got one thing on, as, and it's just a CUP for an ADU, that's a lot of abbreviations, then we probably have time to deal with our ZO. Yeah, it's almost bedtime, so.
I have one last thing, though. So we have a meeting on November 18th, December 2nd, and December 16th. By the 16th, we really have to have this finalized, because the 17th is the last, at noon is the deadline for the ad for the paper for the public hearing on January 6th. So we've got three more shots at this, but again.
We are 50% there.
Coming up on the 16th, so I think we're pretty close.
We're, we're in good shape. And I, this, this process, it, I think it's working pretty well to go through it piece by piece like this. It's, it's helpful for me, so.
Much improvement. Thank you.
Can I, can I share my thoughts on, on point of order? Or, or, or community involvement in these discussions?
I would love that because I feel like we did go off, it's a little bit tonight.
So, no, I, I agree. So this process shouldn't take this long. The, our role as planning board members is to, is to come together and come up with, is to know, is to come together with, with ideas. The appropriate point for us to bring in community comment is during the hearing process. Like, I'm not sure that we have the ability to have public comments on every proposed change we're discussing. I think it's our responsibility to educate ourselves as a board, as individual members, to know, to kind of have a feeling for what this town is looking for. And we should be putting our heads together to propose and discuss language that we should be considering putting towards the voters. The public hearing is when we take comment from the public. And if we need to change what we've drafted, we have the opportunity to do that. But I think having a lot of public involvement at every step of the process ends up with meetings going to nine o'clock. And I don't think it's, I don't, it's not, I think the public should be invited. We should be open to the public. We don't have to request comments at every oper, at every meeting. That is my thought.
Thank you.
I'd just add to that, though. I think the first two things we went through, I don't think there was a lot of need, but there was strong opinions on the multi-units. And I took away some things from some people that I certainly jotted down questions about. I thought potentially the idea of, if you're going to go to 12 units, you need a larger piece of property. I'm like, that's possibly a good thought, I don't know. I think thinking through the tax impact is a good idea. So, yes and no. I think there, there is, people are bringing up some good points. So it is, for me personally, good to hear from people from time to time. So maybe there's a way we can set a time limit or something like that, so we aren't here till nine o'clock. But anyway, so just throw that out there.
I'm not going to open this up to public comment until we are done with our discussion. So, yeah, I think, I, I definitely see value in getting public input, but I do feel like we are getting bogged down in having everybody speak. And, and I think Phil's right, though. The way this process works is we put our heads together, we create this, and then we have the opportunity to make those changes and hear those comments. And with people who get to see the, the material with plenty of time, with that legally required time to take a look at it, Jan.
Planner didn't comment so much. I was thinking, maybe I can try to go through and gather some of the public comments and general comments and put them on. I had a sort of a flip chart. I was thinking about doing that tonight, but just sort of collect them. We can have them there. So next time we do get into this, we can kind of refer, these are comments we've already heard and thought about. Does that make sense? And not try to encourage people to come up with new comments rather than, or we can just.
Thank you.
All right, anything else from the board tonight? Okay, now is the time when the public can comment on, of any nature. Please keep it to three minutes or less.
I just want to say, you say wait till the public hearing. I've been to enough of those public hearings when enough people in town of Plymouth are all upset about something, and the board is all disgusted because they did, they've done all this work for the months, and now all the people are objecting to it. You need to get public comment now, or when you should have gotten it months ago. Nobody knows exactly what you're dealing with, because they don't have time to sit there and watch the thing on TV every day. You need to have notices go out, what you're discussing. The town needs to be able to put input into it before it gets to the public hearing in January, where you have to have it into the warrant article in a week. So you need to get public comment a long time ago, and you need to let the town, the town of Plymouth people know what you're discussing, what you're thinking about doing.
Thank you.
Frank Miller. This is on fences and some technical reference to some of the items that were discussed. I went, I had a issue and I was taken to court in mid-'80s about fences. And under RSA 477:1-56, which is New Hampshire's law on your description of your deeds, which contains restrictions, conditions, and easements and such. All right. Under the, each RSA, there's a New Hampshire practice series that talks about what the courts and or juries have determined the content of an RSA is to mean and how it's to be applied. So one of the rationales for fences was a spite fence. And that's where your neighbor decides to put up a fence, which under New Hampshire law is, if it's on the boundary line, both parties, the fence viewers, have an obligation to maintain said fence, which would cost them whatever they have to put into it to do so. So this one foot, it was a result of when somebody wanted to put up a fence against the neighbor, it had to be totally on their land, and they had to have the provision, a means to maintain said fence. And that's why the foot's setback. Okay? If both neighbors are in concurrence with this fence, it can be on the line. But that was from 1985. I would recommend you visit the New Hampshire practice series that goes with RSA 477 that would explain anything current on that issue.
That makes perfect sense. Thank you.
Thanks, Frank.
Anyone else? Who would like to do the honors?
Damn.
All right, all of them favor. Any votes?